Good, good.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty two meeting of the North Borough South Borough Regional School Committee. And I should remind everyone this meeting is being recorded. First item is action on the minutes. I contain a motion for action on the minutes, open meeting minutes of December fifteenth, twenty twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving these minutes? To be unanimous, thank you. Educational policy, we have none at this time, I believe. New business, first item is the English learners presentation. Please, Rota Webber's with us.
Maybe need to move already. Let's see. Maybe not. About to find out.
She is.
Yep.
Alright.
Yep.
Good evening. Thank you for opportunity to present tonight about our English learners at the high school. Um, the program of English learners or English as a second language or English language development in the United States was created on many federal um civil rights cases. And what we see here are state regulations from our own Department of Education. These guidance documents need to be in place in every district here in Massachusetts. And where you see the blueprint for L success, that is a lot of resources that the department has for our schools and English learners as a district or school in the classroom. And the L dashboard has a lot of very important information about English learners. Uh, but it is um up up to last year. What I'm presenting now is current information from this school year. So our English learners, um, the state definition is is really very straightforward, very simple. An English learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is currently not uh who is not currently able to perform ordinary classwork in English. Um, the first step is um for every family when they enter a school district in Massachusetts is filling out a home language survey. If if the family um has a home language in addition to English or other than English, um, that is when uh we have to, according to regulations in Massachusetts, screen for English language proficiency. And the reason is to ensure that students have access to classroom and content material at the grade level or middle school or high school level. Uh, we're also have to implement language proficiency screeners um at the from grades kindergarten and up through grade twelve at the high school. It's the WIDA screener that we have to use in Massachusetts. And our English language development teachers are trained to uh implement those screeners. Uh, we get to know every student very well. We look at the educational background that students come to at the high school. Um, we get to know the students, the language, the home languages, their cultures, uh, whether they're literate or not in their home language. And that helps uh together with guidance um design the pathway for them to be able to um take coursework here at Algonquin and graduate from our high school. We also have to send families home placement letters in English and in the home language when needed to let families know that their child qualifies for the English language development program. Um, now I want to show you district trends over the years. Uh, the first one is to look at the population. When we started counting English learners at Algonquin, there were four in two thousand four, two thousand five. Uh, this school year, we have twenty nine English learners. That's a dark green bar. The light green bars are the students who we reclassify over the years. Um, and we have to monitor for four years to ensure that they are able to make academic progress. Um, the English language development teachers are involved with the with the former English learners as well. So if we look at the count, there are currently sixty four students that they are involved with. Um, what we know is that our students um at Algonquin usually are coming from other countries. Uh, the students that were English learners starting in our elementary school, by the time they get to high school, they have been reclassified or exited from the program. So Algonquin over the years has a different dynamic. The students are coming to us in ninth grade or any of the grades at the high school. And they're usually newcomers, meaning that they are beginning to learn English um as they arrive in our school. Um, we view languages and cultures as an asset, and that's why it is always, um, as I show you now, the um, the amount of languages of this is are only the languages of our English learners and the students who have been reclassified. Um, so you can see the multiplicity of languages and um the majority of the prevalent languages right now are Portuguese, Spanish, Chinese, um, and Arabic. Um, the our teachers are trained to teach the development of the English language and understand how other languages function. And it is always um very important to understand the other languages because our s- our teachers will help the students bridge that the information and connect the two languages because um learning is actually accelerated. And of course, if students come from languages had to have a romance background, there are a lot of cognates which actually help as well accelerate the learning of English. Um, we view languages as means of communication uh and not as barriers. So we have a a very skilled team of interpreters and translators, and Deb Young, the administrative assistant to the program, um, schedules all meetings, whether it's regular education, special education. We make sure that our families are really connected to their students uh learning here at the high school as well as in all our other schools. Um, all this is a snapshot in time, so this was frozen on December first. And this is just analyzing language proficiency levels. Of course, as you learn a language in the four domains, it is fluid. It is not a static, um, it does not remain static for a very long time. But I think what is important to understand when our students come to the high school, at this time, we have almost forty five percent of our students at the beginning levels. That's called a foundational level. And then about fifty five, almost fifty six percent at the transitional level. Foundational level means that a student can arrive with no English, speaking no English to um the end of the foundational level, which would be a low level three, is um speaking and understanding simple sentences. And then you go to the higher level three, which would be like compound sentences, all the way to the final stages, which now they achieve like the complexity in compound complex sentences and understanding um the nuances of the language and a lot of sophistication. I think at the high school level, um, what is always um if you've ever been in a classroom with students who are at the beginning stages, you're in awe that the students are actually um navigating the whole day, needing to understand what's happening at the high school, plus go through a culture ration program if they're processed, sorry, if they're new to the country, which means getting to know the new home and go through the stages of culture shock as they acclimate to the new home and their families as well, and also learn the content in order to graduate. Um, so that's why I show that chart, because it is uh very important for them to understand that the pressure is quite intense at the high school. Because not only is the goal for them to graduate, but also to be able to achieve all the course coursework that they need in order to do that. So a lot of work goes into working with our multilingual uh students. Um, our district has a a model called Sheltered English Immersion, which is a two-component uh program model. It is one of the models um that exists in Massachusetts, and it is formed by two parts. One is the sheltered content instruction, which are the subject teachers. And we've been talking over the years about the core content teachers getting their SEI endorsement, which train them to work with English learners in the content areas from levels three and up, not the levels one to the low threes. Um, so that's where students, by scaffolding their instruction, using their first languages also with resources in their first language are um are accessing the content in the subject areas. And another very important component to that is the English as a second language or English language development courses taught by ESL licensed teachers. And um the instruction is very explicit. It is very thoughtful. Uh, it has the curriculum um at every single level. At the high school, we have different classes that we have two English language development teachers here. The courses that our students take are from levels one, that is the beginner, the student that comes here with at the word level or not knowing any English at all, to level five. So there are five different levels, and they're offered according to the students who enroll in our high school. There's also co-taught chemistry fundamentals class that Miss Oyola i- is a part of. There's also co-taught math fundamentals class that Miss Stimson is a part of. And they also offer um to support the the students an an English learner academic study as well. Um, we are very fortunate to have a very hardworking group of students um and um that are part of all our classes. Um, new from spring of last year, um, the WIDA standards that we follow has come up with updated uh new standards. WIDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And you can see that it is it is centered around these four big ideas and how really, you know, the equity of opportunity, integration, collaboration, they align with our strategic plan as well. And the functional approach to language is language is a means of communication in all registers, in all domains, in all different areas, both social language, academic language. And that's what we are explicitly teaching um our students. Uh, this is just a snapshot of a a unit uh for level two students. Remember, level two students are at the simple sentence level um so that you can see that um uh the goals here, we lo- look at focus language goals, which is narrate by identifying and raising questions of what might be unexplained, missing, or left unsaid. And goal two, evaluate by studying definitions of literary terms to identify, understand the meaning of literary terms in Of Mice and Men. Then we've got language objectives that is tied to the content areas. Our units are content-based. Um, and um and of course, essential questions. So this is just a snapshot of um a lesson within a unit for the students that are at a level two. Um, our students are held highly accountable. Of course, uh, report cards here at the high school. The access, uh, which is a summative test that gives a level of language proficiency level, which is taking place right now. Um, the window closes in March four, on March four. It has been extended due to the pandemic. And then, of course, um MCAS uh in order to to graduate. The access is a yearly test, and we are only able to um once we look at the reports, um, you know, so we get a district report, the school roster report, individual student reports. Uh, this is just a snapshot for an example of a student who you can see, this is what the parents get on the four language domains. The student is between a two and approaching a level three. Um, the families also see the composite scores. And then below, there's a description of what being at a level two or level three means in the different domains. And here is where you can um see that the student is is um starting to connect ideas in spoken language uh language and s- at the simple uh simple sentence level and starting to move into compound uh sentences. So once we receive those reports, um, the school mails the 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 reports home. Uh, these templates are also translated in to all the languages that we need. Um, the reclassification criteria that the Department of Education um uh outlines for us is a a student who achieves an overall four point two score and a three point nine in literacy, we are able to consider for reclassification or to exit from the program. We also take a look at writing samples, reading levels of the students. Um, look at their MCAS results if applicable, and then a reclassification letter to let the families know that the students have exited the program in English and in the home language when needed. Um, so highlights of the program. This was um a small graduation party that the English language development teachers um had last year um to to celebrate our English learners that were graduating last year. And this was before the actual graduation. But I think um what is amazing that happens at Algonquin is a family uh school partnership. Last Thursday, our English language development teachers with Brian Kalnan offered uh two sessions for our families virtually and guardians. One, we had an Arabic interpreter at, the next one a Portuguese interpreter. Our Spanish-speaking families couldn't attend. And our um, they explained, you know, the Canvas platform, showed the Canvas platform with all the resources that they have specifically for our English learners and the parents of our former English learners to understand the high school and went through all the modules. It's translated into the all the different languages that we need. And they went through all the different aspects of the high school um so that our families understand um their child's education here in the United States. As I mentioned before, um, we have a a wonderful team of interpreters and translators um to cater to our families, um, give them access to education here. Professional development that continues, you know, throughout the years as um in working with English learners, in the department has a lot of resources in cu- cu- cultural responsive uh classrooms, and they're calling it cultural responsive and sustaining classrooms and schools. So for three years in a row, we've been offering teacher-led by three English language development teachers a course on what that means based on Zaretta Hammond's uh work. Um, there will also be more offerings at the March twenty one PD day. And it's the work that also the high school is doing and what is in this in the school improvement plan as regards the work that was started last year with a concept of windows and mirrors. Um, I really want to highlight and commend the work that happens at Algonquin at every single level from administrators to the different offices, all the educators, um all the staff that we have here and the hard work of our students, um, because the task is immense. Uh, this the children are needing to um, actually, it's a it's a celebration to see our students um walk that stage and get their diploma. And it has meant that there are hours and hours of very planful work, both on the student's behalf and on on everybody involved with those students at Algonquin to reach that point. We also have an after-school tutoring program for our English learners and of course, a summer enrichment um which I shared with you earlier on. Um, as you see, when all this is in place, we're able to also address the socio-emotional needs. So actually, you know, this it's very tied into the castle framework, and we talk a lot about that. How we're addressing all the needs of our English learners and former English learners. Um, we are addressing that piece as well. We're a p- also addressing empowering learners from our strategic plan because we only want the best for the students uh here at Algonquin. Um, and our work continues um as we c- strive to improve and receive more students. Um, and I o- I'm only grateful for everything that is done here at the high school. Um, and grateful for our students. They're a very hardworking group uh of students this year. Uh, thank you, and I'm open if there are any questions.
Thank you, Rota.
You're welcome.
Question, comments?
Yeah.
Oh.
So, uh, another wonderful presentation. Every year I look forward to you these. You you um clearly have a passion for this, the students, the the uh you know, the um, the the district is very fortunate to have you here. And um, so I do have a few questions on this, on the some of your slides. I'm gonna still want a question that Mr. Budka often asks, asks, do you have everything that you need for the program that you're doing? And 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 um if not, what else do you need? And uh, where do you want to see that this program go next?
Those are great questions.
Thank you, Mr. Budka. Thank you.
We always need the gift of time. Um, we're creating time. We have very hardworking educators and, you know, we want to make sure, and the professional development. So it's sustaining the professional development, making sure that we have the resources that the program needs, that the students need. So that is all, you know, incorporated into the budget. That is always something that we, everybody is mindful of. That is a, that is the wonderful thing. Um, and then, um, you know, is understanding, to be able to understand the needs of our students. And I think more than ever, we're really working as a a very close-knit team um to be able to to address that. Um, of course, always more resources is always good, but we're all living within the budget. And um, I am very pleased with how things are going at this time.
Alright, um, just a couple of follow-ups. Uh, so you mentioned on your big ideas slide, the first bullet was equity of opportunity?
Yes.
Is that because that was not there before and that's a new big idea? Or is or is that, why why was that chosen as a big idea?
Yeah, thank you. I think because it was there, but it wasn't, it was left unsaid, which it means that if we're putting everything in in place uh with the right programming for students, it means that they're getting access to a great education. I think it's just been highlighted. It's not that it was not there before.
Okay. And then, um, finally, uh, you you listed a number of different languages.
Yes.
Some of which I just did not know. Um, is it, do we have experts available in in all of those languages? Um, you you know, there may be more added next year. You know, how do you find those experts? Do we have those experts? And are, is the MCAS available in every language that a student may need?
Alright. So when we don't have the experts, the interpreters in those languages, we're searching for them. And um, and so that is something ongoing, and we do partner when we don't have the interpreters. We partner with a with an agency who looks for those interpreters and translators for us. Um, and then, and we also use, you know, we we have teachers in our district who are bilingual, and they also serve as interpreters and translators for us. Um, and then missing part of your question.
MCAS? Is it available in every language needed?
No, it is not. It is not.
Okay. So what, how do those students, if they need MCAS to pass, to graduate, how is that, how does that happen?
So the only thing they can have access to is, uh, and we, the high school does provide them, our interpreters for the directions. So it means that they might need to retake MCAS until they pass it, and that's exactly what happens.
And do you find that our students who have to do that, do they do they all eventually pass generally?
In general, they do.
Very high, okay.
They don't always, but in general, they do. A lot of work goes into that.
Alright.
For them to pass it.
Thank you for what you do. You're setting these students up for a lifetime of success, so thank you. That's that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else? Kathleen?
So, um, so it so it sounds to me like uh you're doing a tremendous amount of work, not only on the students, but also in helping the families. Uh, do you work with the guidance department if there's any issues that would like require a home visit or something like that? Or do, does your English language department kind of handle all of that?
No, thank you for the question. No, they work very closely with the guidance department. We would not be able to be doing everything that we do without them. So the guidance departments, uh, the guidance counselors work with interpreters as well. We connect the families to each of the guidance counselors. So no, they're an integral part of of the students' um years here at Algonquin.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. Yes.
Thank you.
Who else?
I have a couple. Uh, one of your your charts showed that there's sixteen languages spoken this year at the high school, I believe. And then somewhere on the chart, it said total language is sixty eight.
That's the total language spoken by the students. So that's amount, that that's the students speaking those languages. Does that make sense? I'd need to pull up the slides.
Sixteen, the students speak sixteen different languages.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And I just another one. How are you dealing with the fact that we're all wearing masks? I mean.
Good question.
Alright, so it does make things work, okay. Uh, to understand the language absolutely. And I, the pandemic has been very difficult for many of our families. And so, and using the mask and learning the language, at least the students, we're in school and we're in person. That's the most important factor. Remo- language, learning a language Remo- language, learning a language remotely, that does not work great, it will work for a few students, but not for most of our students. So when we were, you know, during the pandemic, fully remote, that was very, very hard on our students. Yes, so I'm very grateful that we're in person, so the mask is not now at the forefront of of um barriers because being remote and not in school all the time every day, that was incredibly hard.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is um one of my favorite presentations every year, I think it's just amazing work that you do, so thank you.
I have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, do you have access to like an adaptive English learning program? Like what were they using last year remotely? So for example, uh My Time English, right, it's I I know it through Cengage, it's a or National Geographic and it's but it's an adaptive program where they learn on their own a- at their own time and um it's, you know, through the computer. So I just didn't know if you had any access to that for the students.
So the adaptive, so we do have different software programs as well?
Yeah.
I would be intrigued just to for you to show me what it is that you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because we do use Cengage materials.
Okay.
So I'd be very intrigued to see what you're talking about explicitly.
Yeah.
But there are there are different software programs that we use with our students.
What ones do you use?
Not only for English, but for math as well.
Yeah. What ones do you use, out of curiosity? Do you know offhand?
Um so the, I think this this, so we have Imagine Learning, which we're sometimes using with some of our students at at the high school level.
Okay.
And that is an adaptive learning for the four language domains. Uh sometimes if they're working from home and that, we recommend Duolingo, Duolingo with the students.
Oh yeah, I've heard of that, yeah.
We used to have Rosetta Stone.
Yep.
Um so there are different programs, but I'd be very interested in seeing what you're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'll follow up with you on that then, sure.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Kathleen?
I was interested in um the reading of Mice and Men, for example, do they get to read in their primary language so that when they're working on expression, formulating words, that their comprehension is more robust than had they been trying to learn it in English?
Um so we do have, they do have access to different languages and also the um uh a more simplified version of the text as well. So that's how, you know, we're and they're all, technology is working in our favor with the amount of translatable tools that there are right now. So that really helps as well.
Right.
To access, which was not there ten years ago.
Yeah.
And now we're using the tools every day.
Yeah, so they're reading in English and having the answer in English.
Yes.
Anybody else?
So I just have a couple of comments. So I just wanna thank Rhonda for her leadership and I think over the past year and and many months, it's been um extraordinary work by Rhonda and her team to support students. I think one of Rhonda's strengths is really supporting families and really getting to know families well to ensure that um they can support their children and their students. And I also just want to acknowledge Rhonda's work around the SEAL Bilinguality Program.
Oh, yeah.
Um that is important work and I think it it speaks to the fact that speaking multiple languages or being bilingual is an asset. Um and that many of our L students are bilingual, multilingual, and that is an amazing asset that we try to celebrate and acknowledge with all of our students. And Rhonda has um led that work, not only at the high school, but in in Southborough, Northborough as well and it's um I thank you for that and thank you for your leadership.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
No, thank you. No, it's thanks to the teachers here that have done the work. Thank you.
It's gonna be tough to fall, but next up, we have COVID nineteen.
So I'll um I'll start and then we were really, I was really hoping not to invite Mary Ellen.
We don't want you here.
No.
One of these days, one of these days.
We are longing for the days where Mary Ellen does not have to present any information around COVID nineteen, I think that is a common viewpoint. Uh so since we last met on December fifteenth, you know, um things have changed in terms of some policy and protocols. One of the changes that we've seen obviously is um the masking mandate at the DESI level um was extended through February twenty-eighth, although we've met the threshold for um getting the attestation form approved. Um it's just a note that that's changed at the state level. Also, some change in isolation and quarantine guidelines, which I think helps us in terms of keeping students in classrooms more, a greater rate, which is helpful. Um and then yesterday, an announcement um around some new tools and resources that we have as a as a district. So a lot of changes are happening, all, I think all positive, I think we're heading in the right direction and Mary Ellen can provide provide an update of some of the data that we're seeing and then we can have our annual, our monthly masking conversation.
Before I start on the COVID update, I really need to thank Rhonda because for all she said, she really is totally involved with every single one of our families. Whether it be they need support in the community, they need to get the things about COVID translated. She is one hundred and ten percent there for her staff, her students, and her families, so I just need to say. Cause I don't know where I would be without her. Trying to get all this information translated, so um thank you, Rhonda, for all you do. Um do you wanna share?
Sure.
The document? So as you all know, since we last met, um there's been a slight surge in COVID nineteen in our state, in our country, in our town, and in our schools. Um so our cases, Greg's gonna, sure, the case counts. Um from the beginning of the year until December twenty-second, in our total, in our district of ten schools, we had three hundred and fifty-five cases. In the two weeks from twelve twenty-three to one-four, we had three hundred and seventy-four. In the high school alone, um up until December twenty-second, we had ninety-seven cases. In the two weeks around the holiday break, we had a hundred and fifty. Um we've seen um last week, from one-five to one-twelve, in the district, we had two hundred and forty-six cases. Then at the high school, we had fifty-one. And then this week, it's gone down to a hundred and ninety-six in the district and at the high school, forty-two. So um we are seeing a slight trend downward, which is encouraging, which is what we're seeing everywhere across the state um in the country. So hopefully, we'll continue in that path, going downward, um but that's where we are right now. So it's been, trying to keep track of all these was a task, but we're right there and we feel like we're right on top of it. Um and then this is, you can scroll down a little bit, here is a little visual of the what the cases have been. Um this is five weeks, not four weeks, cause I thought it was good to have that short week in there. So that's what we're looking for, right? So we're going back to those days when the numbers were really low. Uh vaccination rates still high at the high school, eighty-seven point two-nine percent. Um as you know, the definition of being fully vaccinated or up to date on your vaccine, if for the general public, has changed. And to be um considered up to date, I guess the way they're wording it now, you have to have your booster. At, in the K to twelve schools, you do not, being up to date on your vaccine is having to your full dose, your full series, whether it be, well, all of these kids was their doses of Pfizer, their two doses of Pfizer. We have um had vaccine clinics for boosters and for people to get any ser- any part of the series at the senior center for the past Tuesday nights and the next one is um Tuesday, that should be one-twenty-five, not one-fifteen. So um and if people are interested in signing up for the vaccine, they can just go to the North, the town in Northborough website and it's easy to access the link there. And I believe Mr. Martino has included it in each one of his uh weekly newsletters. All of this information is available on the district dashboard. Um and there also is a parent resource that has all of the guidance, all the documents you would need. And those are also included on the website and in Mr. Martino's weekly newsletters. So that's the update on the numbers. Um as Mr. Martino said, the there have been some recent guidance that shortened isolation to five days, shortened quarantine to five days. With um as long as people are asymptomatic, they can return to school, we have embraced that and it seems to be working well. Um and just today, there was a webinar from DESI about some new guidance for the testing program. Um the plan right now is for the boards of health and myself to unpack the testing program that they're presenting to us and decide what's best for our districts. So we'll be meeting tomorrow to do that.
Kathy?
So you're, on your chart, um the one where you have like, you know, um this one.
Mm-hmm.
So did you guys do testing then during vacation week? Is that like, cause of?
No, that's just cases that we are notified of.
So people notify you of the?
So through the board of health, we also had a form that we sent out over vacation, so we could kind of get a grasp on what was happening in the community and people self-reported.
So none of this is from testing here, it's all self-reported or not?
Correct, for the weeks that we were on break, there it's not from, well, the twenty-third, there would, there'd be one week that didn't include that, that would be the week of that. Um the week of twelve-thirty to one-five does not include any testing that we provided. Actually, it might include some staff that we did on that, on that Sunday before we came back, but. So um the the testing rates, if you um, you can open up, scroll down and open up the district dashboard. Um the testing rates are on that, you know, the the we scroll down to about page four or five, they'll show you screening and testing right there. Um and those are the ones from last week, the sixth to the twelfth. So we did have an increase since we returned, of people participating in the pool screening. Usually, we were having between eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred people participate and when we returned from our winter break, we had twenty-one hundred people participating.
Is there anything, one second, is there anything you'd say about the new guidance from the state? I mean, I know what I read yesterday that the governor said, but I understand you had a webinar today which maybe added more clarity.
I think the, the, did it add more, nothing is really clear, as far as we're put out in a way that's very clear. But they um, the guidance today just said there is adding this extra to the testing program. You could um join into a at-home testing, uh but then you would not be doing test and stay anymore. So we need to discuss it, we wouldn't be contact tracing or doing test and stay. So it's a, their recommendation was to discuss it with your board of hea- local board of health to see what would be best for our districts. And that's all we'll be doing tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm not gonna preempt your discussion with them, but just wondering if you're finding in the test and stay program a high rate of positive results?
We have not, as you can see up there, we've, in the test and stay is the middle block there, we've done four thousand and sixty-nine test and stays and we've had twenty-eight positives.
Wow.
So it's about what they're saying, about a two percent rate, um is what they said um in the webinar today. You know, ninety-eight percent are negative. What we are seeing is a, is the highly symptomatic people testing positive with our binax.
Yes.
So and people are, um if people are having a hard time getting tests, we are allowing them to go to the test and stay sites. Because last week, it was really tough to get a test and that is a medically proctored test. So rather than come to school sick, we allow them to go.
And they go to the nurse there, right, yeah, makes sense, thank you.
Okay.
So um for the site at Northborough where people can get the vaccination, um the booster or whatever, um is there also thought about offering one for the flu shot? Because I know there's there's, you get, you get the flu, do I have the flu, do I have COVID? I don't know, I'd rather not have the flu or COVID. Could you offer that? Is that something that you've thought about? Cause I know it's hard sometimes to get a flu shot, even at Walgreens, you gotta make an appointment, is it available? Sometimes you have to go many, you know, a number of communities away for it, so I don't know.
I mean, I could talk about it with the board of health, that's who organizes these vaccine clinics through the Burrows branch, all the the, all the Burrows. Do it together, so I can ask them to do it, cause typically, we do offer them in the schools for staff, um so we can look into that for sure.
Cause it does seem to me, and and you're the expert, but the symptoms of the Omicron symptoms for someone who is, who gets it or may maybe been vaccinated and still gets it, breakthrough case, is very similar to what the flu symptoms might be, is that fair?
I mean, all along, it's been that way, it can be anything from the sniffles to full-on, you know, what you typically would consider a flu. And we're seeing more flu also with.
I mean, if that's something that you think that we would be able to do.
Oh, yes, we definitely can do it.
You know, I I think that's something that would be really cool to offer and I bet you you'd get a lot of people who will take both.
I think it probably would be difficult to do a bulk, it would, I would have to be up to them, it would probably be a separate flu shot clinic.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no doubt. And then can you explain the difference between uh up-to-date and fully vaccinated and what's, where where does the school land on that?
So it's the same words for the same thing. So they, fully vaccinated and up-to-date, it's just who's ever saying the words, they mean the same. In the general public, being up-to-date or fully vaccinated means that you have your booster shot or you've gotten your second dose of your vaccine within the last six months, or if you got J and J, it's been within the last two months. In the school system, the definition did not change from what it was before. So if you have had two doses of your Pfizer, then you are considered up-to-date or fully vaccinated.
Thank you.
At this point in time.
All right, thank you.
So is that caveat, right?
Anybody else?
How's the staffing's um situation?
It's heading in the right direction. So we're tracking it daily and, you know, Principal Ben had a difficult week last week, um making sure all the classes were covered, but um we managed and I think we are seeing um good attendance rates at this point. We were like ten percent, eleven percent um last week and the week before. And we're, again, the numbers are trending in the right direction and we have healthy attendance right now.
I know that there was, we talked last meeting about um who handles contact tracing and that the staff is clearly, um you know, when that happens and we see numbers rise, that puts a great strain on the team. Who does the contact tracing? Are they nurses? Are they not nurses? Do they, that's number one, and I have a follow-up based on your answer.
Sure, so uh so our nurses have been the primary people who contact trace in addition to Mary Ellen. Um and we also have some float nurses who support that work. The town of Northborough in the Burrows did receive some grant funding to support contact tracing and add additional staffing. So we are partnering with the boards of health to try to find those people. One of the challenges is finding those people to add. But it's primarily our faculty and staff, our nursing team, who is responsible for contact tracing at this point.
So does it have to be a medical professional to to do contact tracing?
Not necessarily, no.
All right, so you could, if if workers were available, it could be, I mean, does it take a special skill to do contact tracing? Do you have to have an advanced degree or can it be?
Just time and a phone.
Time.
Time and a phone.
You have to have knowledge, you have to have the knowledge of what, you know, the taint measure. You really have to have the knowledge of what you're gonna advise those people, right? You do the contact tracing and then you have to contact the people and let them know they're close contacts and this is what they need to do. Or, you know, you need to have that knowledge base, it does not need to be a nurse. Typically, public health, it has been nurses who do it, even outside of um the schools for our under eighteen. There are town public health nurses do it. Um for the state, when they had the contact tracing collaborative, it was not all medical people, it was just people trained to do the contact tracing. So it's interviewing skills and things like that that you would have to go in. We have um altered our contact tracing a little bit at the high school and we're focusing on the highest risk area, which right now is lunch, where everybody is unmasked and less than three feet apart and sport. So that is where we are contact tracing for. Um we started this week, when there is a positive case, we send the students a Google form to fill out of who they're. of who they ate lunch with on the days they were potentially infectious, who, if they played a sport, who they felt was a close contact to them. And in their classes, if they did any group work or if anybody they felt, you know, they hung out through the day would be their close contact. So they are definitely the best historians, so that seemed to work well this week.
So any progress on identifying a pool of workers who could do contact tracing and alleviate?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's the grant that the town of Northborough wrote on behalf of the Burrows. So we are working closely with the Boards of Health to try to find people who can help focus contact tracing in the, at the school. I think the Boards of Health are now focusing on seniors, senior care and schools as the primary focus for contact tracing. So I know Mary Ellen has been, meets daily with the Boards of Health and that is underway in terms of trying to find those people. I will share some of the changes that we're seeing in terms of the opportunities for tests and stay and, and pooled screening and this new layer of, of rapid antigen testing could help us lessen the burden of contact tracing. And I think we are, all the indications are leaning toward that we're moving away from contact tracing. We're heading in that direction at some point.
Thank you, great.
Sean?
And I, I don't think the general public also understands all what the nursing staff is going through because it's, contact tracing is, just besides trying to contact every person, find out who the contacts were, where they were, how far they were, and then communicating. The nurses are also, correct me if I'm wrong, having to look up vaccination status through web, state websites, which we know are not fast and easy. And then they have to, while doing that, and those four thousand test and stay binex logs have to be entered into databases, so while also receiving students for other symptomatic parts and maybe some mental health issues. So it is, it's an understatement to say like contact tracing takes a lot. There is so much behind all aspects of it. So I just want to acknowledge the challenges and the tremendous work that the nursing staff and sometimes the administration might even get into, at least.
So our nursing staff has been amazing. Heather, Alan and Erica Oomquist, they have been rock stars, really. They started their jobs as school nurses in the midst of a pandemic, so this is all they've known. And I keep telling them, I really want you to see what school nursing is outside of, because you'll really love it. So, um, and I think you have to, we have to remember that their most important thing is taking care of the students and the staff that are in front of them. So this is all on the side, right? So this is all extra, but taking care of those students and the staff that come in with, whether it's symptomatic or mental health issues or whatever it is at hand. So we also have our three clinical resource nurses who have been the backbone really here. There's been at least three nurses here daily since the start of the year. And that's, they've been with us for years and years. That's Kathy Rosowski, Edie Bamberger and Stacy Calabri said they, we never would have made it through this without them. So the, with the changes in contact tracing, I think it's much more sustainable with us just focusing on the highest risk times. And I think as we, as Mr. Martino said, we are going to see a shift going away from contact tracing right now in the community for, the public health nurses are focusing on the over sixty-five and the under eighteen for their contact tracing in the community and everybody else, they expect to notify their own contacts, close contacts. So I think we're seeing that shift, hopefully shifting from pandemic to endemic soon.
Sounds good.
I guess one last question. Noting the, the pandemic fatigue, right, that I think is widely recognized, do you see this as something that is just gonna, you know, everyone's just gonna live with? COVID's something that you, that we're all gonna live with, you're gonna see a new variant, you're gonna see, you know, you've made your choice whether or not you want to get vaccinated and, you know, where do we go? You know, at some point, you know, hopefully if Omicron comes down, is this, is this gonna turn into something that you just, like the flu, although I don't want to equate the two, it's something that is gonna be around forever and we just have to learn to live with it?
I think hopefully we'll, we'll get there. And that's when it will become endemic, I think. You know, if you compare apples to apples, flu to, to COVID, the numbers are so much higher with COVID. So I think when we see what this does, you know, is it, are we gonna reach that saturation point? As we've talked about before, you know, where we're gonna see a drastic drop-off and we'll see spikes in certain seasons and, you know, it'll be, we'll have to see. If we had crystal ball, we'd be, oh, great.
Um, so as far as Northborough having vaccine clinics, are, are residents of Southborough also able to go to those?
Anybody.
And is it communicated to the town of Southborough?
Yes, it's communicated to everybody.
Okay.
Through the Board, the Northborough and Southborough Boards of Health work together on all of these clinics that we've had.
Okay.
They just happen to be at the senior center because it's an easy place to get to and set up the clinic for a larger amount of people.
Oh.
I have a question on like attendance based on our contact tracing and stuff. Because as of, I don't even know the full answer to it, so I'm kinda asking you guys. But as I know right now, like if, and what our nurses are doing is if you're sick, like we go to the nurses say like we're feeling sick, their most recommendation is to go home, get tested, usually if it's symptoms around it. And then we have to wait to get those tests back to know to come back to school, usually if we're still having symptoms. But it's been really tricky and I've been sick a lot this year, I know a lot of people have, that's not COVID. And I've, all those as I know of now are not excused. And that's kind of my main question is like, how are we doing attendance for it? Because I must have so many now unexcused absences just because I was sick and I couldn't control it. And it would be symptoms that like I could have gone to school, but just because it's COVID now and I had to wait for tests and obviously tests are taking longer now, a little bit for PCR to go and get them and trust from the school and how are we like, kinda, kinda figure that out for the kids? Especially because colleges are looking at that for me and juniors and stuff. I'm just like, how much we're going to school and they don't obviously know the whole story and that stuff. I, I don't know if you can like shed light or how much that.
I think in the past two weeks up until this week, testing was at a premium. If any of you had to go to any of the testing sites, you know you waited, you needed to make appointments. It could take days to get an appointment. This week we're seeing much better turnaround times for everything, like less than twelve hours for some sites that we're going, that are, some of the stuff, the spread sites that are there. So as for the absences, that's not anything to do with me, that would be your administration.
I mean, I think that.
She must stick her knee out of the head.
I think you bring up a great point.
Yeah, I was more.
This is a, this is a layer of stress for students because the message is if you're not feeling well, stay home. Students, I mean, we have excellent students who are conscientious and want to be here and keep up with their studies. So there is that added layer of stress. You know, and I know Principal Bevan looks at attendance rates and we're looking at attendance rates, we're taking that into account. And also colleges, colleges and universities, we have strong connections with colleges and universities and they're experiencing the same type of environment or context, which helps. But maybe Sean, Sean, if you wanna.
Yeah, I think that, I was not aware that, that we, that this is an issue. So I can speak with the, the attendance office to find out how are we coding students who are out beyond, who are out, let's say, awaiting testing, that is, seems to me to be very much excusable and beyond the control of that student and very different than a student who just is not coming into school for reasons unrelated to their health. So I will work on that and I'll connect with you and then see how large and widespread it is to connect to other kids.
And I would also think that if you had huge absences, you and your family would have been notified if you were gonna get all these unexcused absences, so I feel like.
I think they're all excused, they're AX, whatever that means.
That's what I would assume, but if you're saying that in the system they're not.
Yeah, it varies. I think like what, as of now, the nurses can kind of excuse them the day of. So like when they're sending you home, that's excused because they know. But then it gets tricky when you're waiting and if you're still symptoms. So like I was out almost a whole week when we first came back from vacation because that was obviously a big Omicron thing, I had a lot of close contacts. Erica, who was the nurse, had, was positive, she's my stepmom, so I was living with her. But I never got tested positive, but it was so hard because I'm living with them, I had symptoms, I was out for the entire week, but I was still negative, I could have gone to school that whole week, but we didn't. No, obviously that's not like your, out of your guys' control. But all those days I was out were unexcused in the end.
Characterizes unexcused, so all right, I can work on that. Why don't you and I speak about it and then we'll come up with a way to examine how it impacts other kids. If you're having that experience, other kids are too.
Yeah, exactly.
And how it gets communicated beyond.
Sure.
It gets tricky.
So, I'm sorry, unexcused absences are a, a data point that we provide colleges, do they, they ask for that? I mean, that's.
I'm not familiar with that.
I don't know, but I've never heard that before.
So we have internal absence codes, excused, unexcused, there's a sort, a number of codes. When we submit data to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it's an absence. It doesn't care what the code is. So that's more of an internal code. In terms of colleges and universities, we don't necessarily report attendance to.
Not that I'm familiar with, I think it would have to be self-reported. What we report to colleges is what's on your transcript, it's the courses you took and the class and the grades you got. We don't even report necessarily what teachers you had. Now, now students might, you know, expand on that in their application. But if you had the experience where somebody, a college was asking you, Lindsay, what, you know, to differentiate between your absences or excuse or not?
No, I must have just missed, I probably just, yeah, no, I thought that, I guess.
She's stressed about it, she's stressed.
Well, it's like.
Even more stressful, Lindsay, because of midterms, so.
Well, yeah, I think it is, I mean, I communicate with our, for some reason, I guess some of us thought we did. So that's something interesting, but now we don't, yeah, now we know.
But I think that that's, it's, it's stressful for everybody. We, you know, our students are so self-con, self, are so conscientious about their attendance and our staff is too, but we really need to stress that if you're symptomatic, you really need to stay home, especially with Omicron. You know, for some people it's the sniffles and for other people they're down and out for ten days. You know, so it's different for everybody, so.
So I will work on that and Lindsay and I will work on that together.
I was just gonna ask, Principal Bevan, have you had to have conversations with staff about adjusting academic? Like, you know, due dates and I can imagine this causes quite a disruption.
Sure, yeah, so we, it was kind of hard to find out exactly how many kids were out. You know, with COVID, how many kids were slow returning from perhaps travel over the vacation? And ultimately, Mary Ellen and I were working together and really all that mattered was the daily attendance and we were monitoring that very closely. And so we had a lot of absences on the Monday after the break and then a few, a little bit fewer after that. And then it kind of slowly declined and is pretty close as of last week to a regular absence total for our kids on a, on a, any date in January, on any ordinary year. However, there are kids who are missing time in that first week in, in January and then in the week, in last week where they were reviewing for exams. And we've asked teachers to be mindful that if a student missed a whole week of review, even if they're returning this week for exams, they missed a great deal of review and that the teachers have wide-ranging latitude and encouragement to waive exams, to give partial exams, to give the exams later. To, if a student completes half of the exam and runs out of time, grade one is submitted to you and, and don't worry about the rest. So we've asked teachers to, to cut back if they need to or if they feel like it would benefit them, the student, to waive things that, that might be necessary to be waived. And we're asking teachers to be really thoughtful about that.
Thank you.
Is that it? Do we want to say anything about the face covering policy? I know the subcommittee did meet.
Yeah, so the policy subcommittee met on January fourth to review the face covering policy and really think about what is that off, you know, that off-ramp on face covering. We had excellent conversation, it was a joint meeting with medical advisory team. And we now have a draft policy that's gonna go back to policy subcommittee for review on February eighth with the goal of trying to bring that to the committee for a vote at its February meeting. Obviously, a lot has changed in terms of the surge that we're seeing. And I think, you know, I, I'm looking forward to the day we can stop wearing masks. But my recommendation at this time is, is to continue with a masking policy for another month and revisit it at the February meeting. And at the February meeting, I'm confident we'll also have a policy for the committee to hopefully vote and approve.
Do you expect any new surprises in that policy, that things that are unattainable? Or is it really been looked at with a, a focus of, as you've been saying for, you know, quite some time, a reasonable off-ramp?
I think it's a reasonable off-ramp. And one of the things we did, Dan, is we looked at if this policy was in place at the beginning of December, would it have triggered, you know, we weren't masked, would it have triggered, triggered masking? And it would have, you know, would have done its job. And it, and it also wasn't, wouldn't be over-restrictive. So it wouldn't mean that we were always wearing masks moving forward. So I feel like there's some, some good language in there that is, is reasonable and doable.
I think with this policy, we would have been able to be without masks for all, the end of September, all of October, all of November, up until we saw the surge in December.
We also found the input, the, the student input, you know, very, we don't want it to be yo-yo. Like, you know, a couple of days here, a couple of days there. So we're trying to make it consistent and so that it's not kind of an eardrake reactions.
So when they take their mask off, we can take the mask off for like a good amount of time versus.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that completes the COVID-19 update. Thank you, Mary Ellen, and thanks to your team.
My pleasure. Your pleasure when you're about to see.
Brings us the legislative update.
So just a, a couple of updates. The first is obviously at the state level, there's a lot of conversations happening around FY23 budget at the state level. Governor Baker and the Joint Committee on the Ways and Means have reached a consensus agreement around for FY23 in terms of state revenue. And it's a two-point-seven percent increase, which is a little over thirty-six billion dollars. And that's a positive sign for moving forward in terms of the FY23 budget at the state level. They also, because of revenue and increased revenue, have released a supplemental budget amendment, which will be part of the supplemental budget before purchasing masks for schools. So we'll get another shipment of masks and we should receive those before February twenty-eighth, according to the press release.
Did you say purchase? Do we have to buy them?
No, uh, the state is purchasing them through the supplemental budget, they're free to us.
Okay.
Free, free.
That's what I was, that's why I thought when you said purchase, I'm like.
So it's like for staff and, and students obviously, but if they need them, but, yeah.
And it's K and ninety-five masks.
Yeah.
And it, you know, we are at the point where we are using a lot more masks than we had anticipated, so. And in terms of Governor Baker's budget release, it is on target to be released later in January. I believe January twenty-sixth is the target date. And as you all know, the regional budget and the governor's budget are connected. We really, it's difficult to project some of the revenue sources and minimal local contribution and state aid that we'll receive until we hear what the governor is projecting in his initial budget. Usually the initial budget is the, is the floor. Usually we've only seen increases from the governor's budget that he proposes. So more information to follow in the next few weeks. And that is the legislative update.
All right, thank you. Our next item is a grant of a whole bunch of tests, I guess spearheaded by the junior class. Speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so Sean, I don't know.
Yeah, sure, I can talk about that. So in November, our student council president approached Abbott Laboratories via cold call email and asked them if they would be willing to provide eight hundred binex now tests for the purposes of perhaps potentially being used as a tool for students to be able to attend safely the winter ball that has now been postponed indefinitely and canceled. So at the time that was happening, it was a possibility. They agreed immediately and sent the kits out to us, who's not used them, they're here in the building, but we've not, you know, alerted the school committee to the fact that we, our student council, which happened without me, clearing it with me first, like kind of went to Abbott Laboratories, got it, happened very quickly, they sent them in. which happened without me, clearing it with me first, like, kind of went to Abbott Laboratories, got it, happened very quickly, they sent them in, and I wanted to alert the regional school committee to this. I, I'm sorry?
I mean, you know.
I, I was not offended at all, I thought it was really to, you know, it was.
I would almost give him like a spring dance, though.
Well, is the prom happening or not?
I know, what's happening?
So, we have two proms happening. So, we have the junior prom in April and the senior prom in May. And Ben Shanzer, the student council president I'm referring to here, has been in contact with me and with Abbott to ask, now that we're not using them for the winter ball, can we per, you know, potentially use them for the junior and/or senior proms, and they've agreed. So, there's no instance where they're asking for them back, and we have them as a tool at our disposal. But they're, you know, they are worth a considerable amount of money, well, reasonable amount of money. Roughly $8 apiece, and there's 800 of them, so it's worth your knowledge of our acceptance of them.
And they'll still be okay at that time?
You know, that's a good question. Mary Ellen, do Binax Now tests go bad?
They are good for one-year placement, that's just a state of the law.
Okay.
Wow, that was a really quick answer.
That's a very good and quick answer, yeah.
Alright, then I guess I will attend.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor?
Good, great idea.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Ben Shanzer and Abbott Laboratory.
Yes, I will let them know, and I thought it was very impressive that he did that on his own, and, you know, impressive, impressive young man.
Indeed.
I'm just curious, did 800 tests come to the school one day? Did they arrive at his house?
You know, that's a good question. I assume they did, and they just were put in storage when they did, so, you know, I think they were in a closet, you know, over in the corner of my main office suite, that's my understanding, yeah.
If you want to know what's in there.
Caught in the trunk of Ben's car.
They were hot commodity three weeks ago, we could have like turned a nice little property.
We could have made some money.
Of course.
That is a, no, our but.
Thank you.
Our next item, it has been correctly pointed out to me, I think by Joan Frank, that is better discussed at a combined meeting, has to do with rotating when the combined meetings happen. I'm sure you guys would all be upset about, about this. But, so we will, I, it all goes as planned, discuss that at the March combined meeting. And that brings us to the superintendent's report to the committee.
And I'll turn it over to Principal Bevan for his principal's report.
Sure. Greg, do you know which library, which network is?
Yes, it is, um.
Yeah, if he's gonna project, I'm gonna.
Library one ATV.
Okay.
I trust you.
Or there's two, main library.
Main library.
Gotcha. Alright.
Need a leg workout?
Okay. Alright, so, just a few updates tonight for you all. First, just wanted to share with you that since we last met, we have had some pretty significant, the significant upshift in COVID cases has forced us to, and my teachers, to make some instructional shifts that you're probably aware of, and it's not news, and it, they, these are things we've been accustomed to doing, but we're doing both to keep our kids from having a greater risk of contracting COVID-19, but also to reduce the amount of contact tracing that would otherwise emerge, would if school was kind of happening in the same way that it ordinarily would. So, what that looks like is primarily reduce group work, which is a real keystone of, of American public education and, and is used to great effect here in the building, so teachers have shifted quite a bit, and I give them great credit for doing so. And I think it has helped to reduce the amount of contact tracing, the amount of risk that's happening in the building in the last about month or three to four weeks especially. So, what that has looked like, for example, is, and you can see this is actually over here behind, behind us, is this is what formerly would have been a group project presented to the class via Google Slides in the classroom, and the teachers converted into a walking museum tour, so they created these trifolds where they addressed all the areas that they would have otherwise done in a group presentation, which it would have taken several weeks of like group work in close proximity to each other, those tasks were broken out, and then created this, this this presentation, and then students in different sections of the same course then rotated through the displays that are back here. I encourage you to see them, they're very impressive for US history too, and then to gather information from each and to make, kind of synthesize the information that they see. So, it was an effort to take the group work experience and make it into something that is comparable and meets the same educational objectives, and that's something all of our teachers are working through. Similarly, here we have a project that's being done in our marketing program, that's been done many year, for several years, it's a, the students work in groups or pairs, sometimes solo, to create a food truck marketing campaign, and they create an actual little, tiny little food truck, and then there's a big kind of display event that they call Gonktopia, that feels very festive, and students are around each other, hearing about each other's work. Again, this had to be converted where the task got broken out a little bit, and redistributed between pairs and in groups, and then the Gonktopia event had to be done in kind of a hallway, in a static kind of way where the hallway, they were set up in the hallway and students could come by, or teachers could send their whole class through to see them, but it just was a little bit different this year. At the same time, there are some classes where group work just simply has to happen, and we're asking teachers to make some adjustments to, to make those still really safe as well. So, for example, this is nutrition. I took this picture specifically because the kids were taking a picture, it's me taking a picture of them taking a picture of what's called a Dutch baby, which they made in nutrition class, but those are two students that formerly might be working in a larger group, of three or four, working in two here. They are both double masked, and they would only be working right next to each other as needed, and so we only have a few small, a small number of classes where group work is being permitted still because of, by the very nature of the work. For example, woodshop is a class where students are working on building a boat, and if they're gonna be doing that, they have to be right next to each other. So, we really have it reduced down to very, very few places where contact tracing would result from students working together. However, teachers do have a high appetite for getting back to that kind of education, and when we do, they'll be excited for it. But in the meantime, they're making instructional changes that I thought was worth noting. Midyear exams are, we're in the middle of them currently. They began yesterday and today, tomorrow, and through Friday, we're completing midyear exams. It's the first time students have taken an exam of this type since, in two years, and if you really think through that, or if you have a child who's a freshman or sophomore, you're already aware of this. It's the first time they've had an exam of this kind of, kind of high stakes and length, and I don't know, the ability to synthesize that much information is maybe something that's a bit of a challenge to them. So, we're very mindful of that, teachers are mindful of that, and we're asking them, as I said before, to give students a great deal of flexibility and latitude while still maintaining the high standards that, you know, that, that we have throughout our school. One of the key pieces of information I wanted to remind you of is that we are using, we've made a big push this year to to make more common the assessments that we are giving. So, in two courses of the same section, two classes of the same course, two sections of the same course, now those teachers, whereas previously they might be giving similar assessments, they're giving truly common assessments this year. And then in the next three weeks, we're gonna be engaging the work of asking teachers to draw out some really high-level conclusions on how students are, are performing on those assessments, and then what does that mean for their instruction, and how can they adjust instruction as a result, as a result. So, this was a big undertaking over, over the course of the year, seemed like it was going very smoothly, and then Omicron, you know, put it a little bit in jeopardy, but our teachers and our department heads agreed that it was still worthwhile exercise to have kids participate in, in exams, especially when we were going, we were planning on gathering critical instructional takeaways from the exams themselves. And then I do have a mascot renaming update. I can go right into that, or I can pause here for questions on non-mascot, school-related issues?
Good.
Alright, so, we are in the home stretch of the mascot process, and so in the next several weeks, we are gonna complete the, the final steps here, and really, there's two big broad categories I'm gonna characterize here for you. One is that we are organizing and implementing a school-wide vote, and a key piece of that, that I'll tell you a little bit more about in a moment, is to educate students on what our choices are, there are five of them. And then we are gonna conduct the school-wide vote, and then once we have those results, we are gonna be doing the big reveal in a live synchronous event with the help of North Row Cable, I'll tell you about that in a moment. So, in the school-wide vote, we have all the mechanics of the school-wide vote, it's pretty simple, given today's technology to conduct a vote of that type. It'd be one student, one vote, but we only students enrolled in our school, of course, and we'll be doing it via, I'm sorry, Mr. LeWoy, the.
Rank choice.
Rank choice voting, yeah. So, we're gonna educate students on what rank choice voting is, and also educate them on their five choices, and then they'll have a chance to stew on those and consider them for a little bit of time, a few days, and then we'll do the vote itself. In that box below, these are some opportunities we are developing for students to become increasingly involved. One of the things, which is not a surprise, but is something we continue to lean on, is that every time we engage students in this work, it, it reminds us how important it is to gather student voice as a part of choosing the mascot, and so as we are getting students ready to vote, we are gonna be working with, Ms. Norman has agreed to have me work with her sports and entertainment marketing class to create a campaign for each of the five options, and then to potentially create the slide deck that students will hear about or listen to on each of the five, and what brand attributes and, you know, associations are will, will be made about each of the five. So, that will be in the coming couple of weeks. And then the final step is, once we have those results, is to develop a live synchronous moment where we do a reveal for the community. Ideally, we would have that as an in-person event, I mean, this is, would be in a, you know, in an more ordinary circumstances, we would do that, where we, you know, pull down the curtain and, and a gym full of students see that, but it just doesn't appear to be in the cards currently, and I don't know that we wanna wait until it does. We wanna have a mascot that we can rally around as, sooner than later. So, right now, what we are doing, and it's happening today, began yesterday, is North Row Cable is capturing some footage and remarks of students talking about the things they love about Algonquin, and the things they're gonna remember about Algonquin. That is gonna be incorporated into this video, that will be part of this live synchronous event, and at the end of the video, they will declare, are we the Eagles, or Nor'easters, or Titans, or Thunder, or Falcons? And so, that will happen in the next several weeks as well. And North Row Cable's been terrific, they're gonna create this really kind of, they call it a sizzle reel, it's a video that should have a lot of energy and declare for the community what our, our next mascot will be. There is an interest from several people, and so I'm gonna be working, I'm looking to work with the school store on the following, which is to accept some pre-orders of of apparel that would conceivably be prepared and ready for the day after the mascot is revealed, so that people could.
It's like the Super Bowl.
I know, it will be, that would be, maybe, that would be, that, that would be a bit of a high, a tall task, but I think we might be able to.
You get coupons, like rush to the store?
So, that, I think that would kind of reinforce the excitement, and I think there are a lot of people who are just really excited to turn, you know, turn the page on, on this. And then after the reel, I, I don't think the work stops there, and I just wanna just continue to remind us all and remind my teachers and students that, that this will be our mascot, and it will take some kind of brand development to make sure that it is, that the uptake is as full and as quick as possible. And so, we're gonna be developing a robust graphics package for use with all teams, clubs, et cetera, so we have, we'll have kind of a singular anchor starting image to work from, and then we'll get a, a series of images based on that aesthetic with our feedback after that. I've already been in touch with the Little Leagues in town to, to offer that, whatever we develop with our graphics design company, we can, we're happy to share with them if they wanna kind of start to adopt our imagery, I think that'll help unify the brand, and will help to get younger kids to identify with a new image associated with Algonquin. And then the, the, you know, the work of ordering uniforms and ordering decals and, you know, the flags and the things around the building that we agreed to replace, we're gonna start to work through replacing on the cycle that makes sense without being unduly financially burdensome. And that's, that's that. Captain?
In the cable offerings, which I think is wonderful, it's an opportunity to connect with the community, and for all those that continue to hurt about the retirement of the T-Hawks, I think this is an opportunity for the children who are more culturally sensitive to, to put this whole process there for something for them to, to see, because in discussions I've had with frankly, my elders, our elders, there's just no, there was little conception as to why this would be done. It seemed like a very hurtful and spiteful thing. And the, the whole DEI context is really, did not seem available. And they're thinking at this time, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the children to help to educate why this is a sign of our times, why we're doing this, and I'm wondering if, and I also am looking to balm hurt feelings so that, that our elders continue to be really supportive of the, of the school system. And I'm wondering to what degree that can be included in the cable presentation.
I think the appetite currently is to know what the mascot is, and that that will be a brief, high-energy kind of embrace of the new mascot without a great deal of kind of introspection on how we got there. I think we just need to, I think, cross that threshold and then build infrastructures and steps in our curriculum and around our building, so that that education can be, can, can happen at a time when people's appetites are ready for it. I think what I've heard from student leaders is they're, they don't know what to cheer at games, and they wanna, there, there's an interest in like clarity, and I don't think that, that interest in clarity currently, I think we can meet that interest and meet it well, while simultaneously build a long-term plan that is already starting to unfold to make sure our curriculum reflects kind of deeper dives into the contributions and culture of the NIPMUC, for example. So, I, I think they are intertwined for the purposes of the reveal part, I think it will be entirely, it will be entirely about students' reflections on Algonquin, their excitement and pride of our school. I think it will not touch on some of those kind of, those more pain, some of the elements that can be a little bit more painful on both sides of the issue.
I think there's an educative opportunity here that, of course, would be ideal coming from the school, and especially from the students, that somehow didn't, wasn't fully conveyed in the emails or newspaper articles, and I, I fear that, you know, just that this sort of long simmer will make town meetings perhaps more contentious just when it's school budget time. There's just a rift, and, and I would love to see whatever can be accomplished in a reasonable effort.
Yeah, I agree.
To help heal that rift.
So, it probably doesn't help to call people who supported the Tomahawk mascot culturally unaware, insensitive, or uneducated. But, you know, great, great presentation, Greg, and, I mean, uh.
Sean.
Sean. And so, my, my question though is, you had, you, you chose to do ranked voting.
Yeah.
Which has been kind of tried in different parts of the country to not great success. And it's been very confusing to those who have done it. Why would you introduce that element here?
So, I think, and I don't know, maybe Mr. LeWoy can pitch in, I think the idea of ranked choice voting was that with five choices, if we did a straight vote, what could emerge is that you could have the winning choice gather only 35% of the vote, and that wouldn't truly reflect, you know, the strength of, or the kind of endorsement of the school community. and that wouldn't truly reflect, you know, the strength of, or the kind of endorsement of the school community until the secondary votes start to reflect, you know, how people's second choices might, my understanding is that ranked choice voting does-
Yeah.
-serve that outcome.
I just encourage you to look at some of the disasters that happened when, in some elections when they tried to do that and the voter fatigue that went into it, the, you know, the difficulty in trying to actually make it work to the way that you think it's going to work before actually doing that. So again, up to you, you're running this thing, but, you know, ranked choice voting is not a popular, you know, thing in elections. And so, you know, best of luck, but, you know, just, I encourage you to look into that and really be sure that you're doing the right thing in choosing that.
Kathy?
So my first thing is, and I know this is not going to be a popular thing to say, but I'm actually happy that you guys are going back into midterm testing a little bit, just to get kids to feel, I mean, at some point, you have to get back to normal. And especially for the seniors, because colleges are not necessarily giving a break on testing right now. Like you're going to class, whether it's on Zoom or it's in the class, and you have to get, go there, you know, to take the test and stuff like that. So I do think it's important to get everyone back into that mode again. And my second thing is, as far as the mascot goes, do we get graphics of all, like when they choose or get to vote, do they have a graphic that goes with every single mascot?
Yes. So we got what was identified as the initial rendering of each of the five. So it's a very, you know, a very basic, you know, rendering of each of them, just so there is a visual representation for each.
Yep.
Once the decision is made, you know, a final decision is made, that's when we really dive into the creativity and the feedback- What it's going to be like, what are some highlights, you know, how do we round this and tweak that? So that's where, you know, we can really dive in the time and energy is to make that what we really would like it to be.
Can you guys share, like at some, like whether it's-
Exactly, where are they?
Like can you share those with us at some point, like whether it's, I know you probably don't want to do it, well-
Yeah, what we're trying, what we were trying, well, I really want to thank the graphic design firm. They did work over the holiday to, you know, to make the adjustments and to make it work and make it ready. And then we came back and Omicron hit. You know, so we were hoping to be a little farther along where students would already have these and we would be, you know, sharing them more. At this point, we're really trying now to work with the, the marketing, you know, class to build those, you know, how that's going to be portrayed to the students. And we want that to be kind of the first way that that's, you know, introduced.
And then, well, after you have your mascot, because I think kind of like when we were in our groups, we would think of a mascot and be like, oh, my gosh, that would be a great, like, tiny tomahawks, which they're not anymore, but like what the preschool needs would be.
Sure.
Is there like, is that going to-
That was part of the conversation with the firm, to make sure we kind of captured that angle as well.
So you have something for that?
A lot of the things that we had discussed when we got deeper into it and about what we wanted to appeal to and be adjustable for-
Yeah.
-was included in, in, in-
In a preschool.
-in our conversations with them. So they were taking really a lot of notes of what, how we want this image to reflect and be transferable to all aspects of student life.
Okay.
You know, especially some of those more unique options, so-
Because this mascot's not only for sports teams, it's for everybody.
Sure.
So you have to, you know-
And the idea is at the end, the final one will have five different, you know, kind of like, you know, copyrighted images-
Oh, that's awesome, okay.
-that can be used. And it's a combination of, you know, the logo with the word-
Yeah.
-and then including Algonquin, or just Algonquin and the name, and then different rendering. So that, you know, would look good on a lapel of a golf shirt, or the back of a jersey, or whatever the case may be. So the adaptability of that is something that this firm is incredibly good at, and it can be far stretching. Because we did bring up, you know, we wanted to be able to be put on a decal, but also be able to be used for our, you know, drama performances and things of that nature. That would be on the, you know, the cover of the bill, the playbill.
Like, oh, like everything, yeah.
So, you know, that's the type of stuff that we did share with them, and they're ready to dive into it. Once we get to that, once we get to that final decision, that's where I think the work and the creativity and the adaptability is going to be really defined.
Okay.
According to the timeline, we're about a week out from sharing, so we want to build suspense.
I mean, I mean, it was a good process to go through, but that was, you know, we, you know, as, you know, we send our small groups, you know, like-
Yeah. And two things really pushed the, no, I wouldn't say pause button, because I do want to thank the graphic design firm. We did have the holidays in between and then coming back, and Omicron certainly did help, you know, progress this, you know, to the point where we're like to be. So we would like to have been able to show you guys something today, but we want to make sure we do in the right steps.
Yeah, I'd love to see like what you guys have come up with for the five, if, you know, when you have it.
Yep, you got it.
Are the students going to be able to vote on what graphics they, or like have any decision in that?
There's going to be an opportunity for input once we get to the final part. But for this, it was important just to kind of get something so it could be displayed and out there.
Yeah.
So that, prior to now, no, but going forward, yes.
Yeah.
So my, my vision for it is that students will see a slide deck of all the five with the brand attributes and the, and each, a logo for each. And then whatever the, whatever the choice is, we'll gather input so that we can create this like greater package of different iterations of that logo with kid, with input from students.
Yeah, my other thing was, would you be willing to ask some of the art programs? I know, like you're working with the marketing team. I've talked to a lot of, like, artists, especially in National Art Society, that have worked with logos and kind of like playing with it. And they'd love to like-
Yeah, that'd be great.
-help you guys out if you'd be willing to.
Can you send me who you are aware, are already talking about it and I think getting a logo for it?
And that was something that we had discussed in our, in our study group, is making sure we did have that lens on it.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of when that time would be, and it probably will be after the final decision's been made.
I mean, that would be actually something fun, just even if you could sell that, if you could just sell that at your student store. Like something that was designed by the art, like, you know what I mean?
I anticipate there'll be a period of time where we know what we are, we have like a initial rendering that is sharp and looks very, you know, very polished. As, and then people may be having, you know, apparel with that one image on it as a greater kind of complement of like a, a whole bunch of other images that support that image are developed. And then those will go out to, in a branding bible to all of our clubs, activities, and then we're off to the races for uniforms and other things around the building.
Be a fundraiser.
I had one question before you, Dan, but can you talk a little more about the reveal? You said there was going to be a live event combined with televised, what's, what's the live component?
I think the live component would be me introducing all classes to a, like, live-streamed, and we would invite families or anybody who would like to see that in real time, welcoming people, maybe talking briefly through the pro, you know, the process, and then kicking it into this prepackaged video that will end on the reveal of the, of the new mascot.
Have you thought about like day and week and time of day to do this? Because I'm just wondering, it may be something you could do during the school day so all the kids are in their classrooms at the same time.
Correct.
That's the goal, and probably at the end of the school day, because I think if you did it in the middle-
You'll never get them back.
If you, if you did it, yeah, it would have to happen at a time where we knew the things that happen after school are going to be possibly interrupted. So whenever it is, it will be, you know, in the last probably 20 minutes of the school day or 15 minutes of the school day, and be aware that that will generate a lot of interest and enthusiasm and, you know, I don't know, responses that vary, but aren't going to contribute really to doing a lot more schoolwork in the time that follows. However, then if we did it on a Thursday or Wednesday, you know, kids should be back on the next day, you know, prepared to do work. It's not like, you know-
Friday, February 18th.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Right, perfect.
Dan?
And how is the voting actually going to take place? So is it on the computer? How are they doing it, on the computer?
On the computer, through their secured account, through their school secured account. So it'll be a link that's only sent to Algonquin students, so only they can access it. And then it will be open for a short duration of time. So Sean's scheduling that with the teachers on when that's going to actually happen. And then it'll be open for the 10 minutes or so. Ballots will be submitted, and then we'll start the tallying process.
And are you offering absentee voting, mail-in voting?
Yeah.
Dropbox? Okay. And then for, so for school, for students who may be out sick or they're not in the school, they can still vote?
Correct.
It's all going to be online?
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No hanging chats.
No hanging chats.
That's it, thank you, Sean.
Yeah, that concludes my report.
Yes, yes.
All right, so in your packet is the enrollment report. And as of January 12th, we had 1,270 students, hang on, let me just find my place. We had 1,267 students and three students more than our projected enrollment of 1,264. And as we look at enrollment projections for NASDAQ for FY '23, NASDAQ is projecting 1,201 students. And our projections are 1,218 students. So again, we're seeing a decline in enrollment as, as we were projecting, looking at our NASDAQ reports. So any questions about enrollment? All right, so also in your packet is the monthly general fund, actually the capital plan. So FY '23 through FY '29 capital plan. And just a quick comment that we are moving forward with the redundant water heaters to both town meetings as a warrant article. And we have a meeting scheduled with the South Borough Capital Committee on Monday, this Monday. And then we have not scheduled a meeting with the North Borough Capital Committee, but are in conversations with Town Administrator John Kader about scheduling a date for that. So we do anticipate that will be a warrant article in both the North Borough and South Borough town meetings. So also in your packet, if you have not noticed, Rebecca Pellegrino is not here today, so I am filling in. And I will do half the job that she does.
Do you have any questions?
She had a prior commitment, so-
She's watching it right now live.
Yes. So in your packet is the FY '22 monthly general fund expenditure report as of December 31st, 2021. And it does mark the halfway point of fiscal year '22. And for all intents and purposes, we are trending as projected. And as of December 31st, 2021, we had $557,311.93 on the bottom line, or 2.23% remaining. And in comparison, at the same time last year, we had $431,845.55, or 1.79% remaining. And at this point in time, the finance team has no concerns of the budget. And we are, again, projecting and tracking as we anticipate.
Paul?
So just a comment on the estimated receipts for athletic receipts, where, according to this report, we're still $131,000 shy of our estimated receipts. And we've kind of changed attendance rules and stuff for some of those, some of our sporting events now that generate money, right? So, I mean, I'm thinking, we can't be comfortable with this number, and it's a pretty big number.
No, so we are monitoring, I mean, we have been impacted by the attendance policies at athletic events. This winter, we are tracking that closely. The athletic fees that you see do include the winter sport registration fees. And that we are anticipating that there will be some changes of the policy to allow spectators back to some of our games in the next few weeks, which we hope will help bolster some of those projections that we had made in terms of gate receipts.
So Greg, and I understand the policy, the, you know, non-participation policy on students, how you do it here. How do you enforce that? And how, you know, what's, you know, how do you legally say to a student, you can't go to Marlboro? And go in, if their facility is open, for instance?
So we are part of the MidWatch League, so it is, the athletic directors in that league came together. And it's for all the teams that are in that league have the same policy. And the athletic directors and the people who, the coaches have been able to implement the policy without any issues at this point in time. So I think if we had separate policies, if we had a different policy than Marlboro or Watch Uzit, then I think we'd have issues. But again, it's same, it's same, same policy for all the communities that participate in that MidWatch League.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused, because I've, I've heard that some students, our students can't go to an away game, but other, you know, students are all there and they can, am I misinformed?
Yes.
Okay. That can happen.
There was a time where that was true. It was a short period of time where we had a higher rate of COVID positivity than our neighboring schools.
Okay, because I-
We enacted a, a local to the school policy for, for a week before the rest of the league all went-
All right, so that's where I'm getting it. So I'm not off base, but it's now it's uniform.
Uniform, correct.
It has been for several weeks, yeah.
Thank you.
So as far as your receipts, though, so you're saying like the next few weeks it'll change. But as soon as it change, you're going to go to playoffs, and that's going to be an MIAA thing. So is there any conversation with the MIAA to try to like get some of that receipt considering, you know what I mean? I mean, because they keep 100% of those receipts.
Yeah, so there have been no conversations that I'm aware of.
So can there be a conversation then about that?
I think we can explore it as superintendents, you know, around being impacted by COVID-19 gate receipts.
Right, because I mean-
It's been a year and a half of struggling with, you know, trying to meet, you know-
Because they're going to allow everybody, and then they're going to take all the money.
Yep.
Okay, I think we jumped ahead a little bit. We still need, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of December 31st, 2021, until audited.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any more discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous.
And also in your packet is the FY '22 revenue report. We did speak about athletics and how we're being impacted by COVID-19 and some of the receipts that we were hoping. And just another note, we did receive the second quarterly payment of Circuit Breaker. And also, we received the Town of South Borough's December 1st assessment payment. So those are some changes from the last report that you reviewed.
On the athletic front, we don't normally charge for baseball games, right? Or soccer, or anything else in the spring?
Correct.
Good.
We can pass a hat, or, I don't know.
I think at this point in time, we're not, and honestly, we track this, you know, the finance team and I meet weekly and we monitor this very closely. At this point in time, we're not concerned with, with what we're seeing in terms of a lack of gate receipts. I think the athletic revolving at some funds, so I think we're in a good place at this point in time.
Okay. Sean?
Am I reading this right, too, that the parking fees doubled the estimate? It says received $55,230, and we, it was estimated that it'd be $24,000 receipts? So are there a lot more people parking than we anticipated, or?
So I can follow up with Becky on that change?
I just would anticipate the parking lots might be overflowing.
We collect parking fees, I believe, Sean-
Twice.
-twice a year, so I need to follow up with Becky on, you know, if that was the second collection. If, if the first projected revenue was for the first wave of parking fees, if I can follow up.
But there's a lot less kids on buses. I mean, there's a lot less kids on buses.
Yeah.
So it could certainly ripple into this.
Parking was already tight, I was just wondering if-
But doubling, I'm not worried.
Maybe that's based on last year's numbers, or because we're only here half the time?
Yep.
Oh.
But I will follow up with Becky and get back to the committee.
Okay. And I'll also entertain a motion to approve the statement of revenue as of December 31st, 2021, until audited.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dan. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? That's unanimous.
And next, I will share the FY '23 recommended budget presentation, and I will commit to giving the third-best presentation of the evening. I am going to stand up at the podium, so.
So good evening, and again, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the FY twenty-three recommended budget. I will go through the entire budget presentation, even though committee members have seen this presentation many times, for the purposes of sharing this information with the larger community.
Never gets old.
And so I think the first important information to share is that, you know, we are a mission and vision-driven organization. We're not about profit and loss. We're really around creating the next generation of leaders, of citizens of our country. And the mission of the public schools of Northborough and Southborough is quite simple but powerful. It's to educate, inspire, and challenge all students. And the vision is that our students will be collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, and healthy and balanced as they leave Algonquin. So in terms of the budget process, the finance team is often in several financial worlds. They're either exiting a fiscal year, entering a fiscal year, or preparing for an upcoming fiscal year. So they have a very difficult task, and they do it fantastically. It begins in September with a committee really thinking about what are its budget priorities for the upcoming year? And making sure those budget priorities are aligned to Vision twenty-two-six, the district strategic plan. In October, the initial budgets are presented to the central office. So a lot of work and attention to detail happens at the building level with a leadership team under Sean's leadership, working with the department chairs and educators to really think about what are those initial budget requests? Those budget requests in October are then organized and synthesized and then used to create a preliminary budget. That preliminary budget is reviewed by the leadership team in Algonquin and the central office, and really begin to think about what does the budget accomplish? Bless you.
Thank you.
And that is the making of the first preliminary budget that we present to the school committee. In November, we also review the capital plans and also begin preliminary budget conversations with the operational budget subcommittee. And then December, December fifteenth, I presented the preliminary budget to the committee. And then we had ongoing budget review and revision conversations with the high school leadership team and the operational budget subcommittee. And this evening, I stand before you to present you with the recommended budget. And I will share that the regional budget is a little bit different than the Town of Northborough, the Town of Southborough, in terms of the pre-K through eight budget, in that we rely much more heavily on state revenues and projections. And again, there are a lot of assumptions in the budget that I'll present this evening. And we'll have a much clearer picture of what the budget landscape will look like after the governor releases his budget at the end of the month. Once the school committee votes to approve the budget, then we kind of march toward March and April, hold our public hearings, and then present the Southborough and Northborough town meetings for a citizen approval. So as we looked at the FY twenty-three budget, we identified a few variables that are a bit unique to this fiscal year. The first is Chapter Seventy funding in the Student Opportunity Act, specifically around transportation, out-of-district transportation reimbursement. We are entering in year two of reimbursement, of funding from the Student Opportunity Act, and that is being phased in over a four-year period. So we're anticipating some additional funding for out-of-district transportation reimbursement. Health insurance, so unexpectedly, we learned that Fallon Health was getting out of the commercial health insurance business. As a result, we had a single carrier. So we have been working closely with our health insurance consultant, NFP, and also partnering with the community of Southborough and the community of Northborough to see how we can pool our resources to get the best value and best product for our employees. And we are in the process and close to coming up with a recommendation to our collective bargaining agreements and our associations, and we hope to have that wrapped up in the next month. But again, it's an unknown as we, as we move forward in the budget processes at this point in time. Out-of-district special education funding, so Circuit Breaker, again, it's unknown at this point in time, and we're waiting for what percentage will be reimbursed. And this is something that, again, we'll learn in the next few weeks as the governor releases his budget. And the new this year is inflation. We are seeing an impact on the costs of goods and services, and it is having an impact on how far our dollar goes in terms of spending. And we do anticipate that inflation will be a factor as we move forward in the months and year ahead. So that's something we're watching very closely. So in terms of the school committee approved budget priorities, in the fall of twenty twenty, the school committee spent a lot of time revisiting its budget priorities and really thinking about, you know, making sure that the budget priorities are aligned with Vision twenty-two-six and the strategic plan. And these are the budget priorities that the school committee came up with and revised this fall. Prioritizing social, emotional, and physical well-being of students, maintaining high-quality staff, instructional programming and instructional resources, achieving class size according to school committee policy, preparing all students for high levels of success in college and career, funding initiatives of the school improvement plan in Vision twenty-two-six, creating, creating a fund in a short-term and long-term capital plan for the high school. And lastly, fund the school committee-approved initiatives that are recommended by the Coalition for Equity. So in terms of the budget process, the baseline that we began with is FY twenty-two appropriated budget, which was a little under twenty-five million dollars. And it is a budget, it is a process. So the preliminary budget process includes the high school leadership team, educators, and department chairs meeting to really think about if there were no fiscal constraints, what would the asks be in terms of good services and human resources? Those budget requests totaled a little over twenty-seven million dollars for an eight-point-three percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. Conversations with both town administrators, that was well above the benchmark that the towns provided us in terms of what would be a fiscally responsible budget for us to share with the towns. We went back to the numbers and looked more closely in, through the leadership team at the high school and the district office. We were able to reduce that budget to a four-point-five-two percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two, which totaled twenty-six million, one hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And then after some additional work, and again, the budget picture becoming more clear, this evening I am recommending to the committee a twenty-five million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eighty-one-dollar budget, which represents a three percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. So in terms of the budget drivers, you know, what are the drivers that are driving the increase? Instructional textbooks, materials, and technology, a little under twenty-five thousand dollars. There is funding in this budget, although a small amount, but important. For OPEB, a twenty-five thousand dollars. Salary increases in COLAs, we are entering in fiscal year twenty-three into our third year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement, and that represents a two-point-seven-five percent increase. That's a two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-one-dollar increase. Insurances, so health liability, workers' comp, that's a little over fifty thousand dollars. Special education out-of-district transportation, a little over eighty-three thousand. And special education collaborative tuition, we've seen a significant increase of two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. And again, some of those budget drivers is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. So in terms of budget offsets, so FY twenty-two Circuit Breaker reimbursement offset of a little under eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Employee retirements and leave of vacancies, a little under four-hundred thousand dollars. Staff reduction, sixty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. And line item reductions of thirty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So again, the budget offsets total one million, three-hundred-and-twenty thousand, eight-hundred-and-four dollars. So again, the budget that I'm presenting this evening is really a level services budget, for the most part. But I do want to emphasize that we have a high level of service for our students. And Principal Bevan and the leadership team at the high school are really looking at how to maximize the resources, the people, the programming that we have, to maximize the expertise for our students. So in some aspects, it's really reimagining the people, the programs we have, really improve the student experience. So the preliminary budget, that's what should be the recommended FY twenty-three budget, is twenty-five million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eighty-one dollars, which again, is a three-point-zero percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. So one of the aspects that is included in this recommended budget is student activity fees. So the Operational Budget Subcommittee met to discuss, is there any way we can reduce some of the fee structure? Fees have been a part of Algonquin Regional High School for many years. So we looked at athletic fees, and we also looked at parking and student activity fees. And where the Operational Budget Subcommittee landed was making a recommendation to try to reduce student activity fees. And where this budget includes a two-year implementation to eliminate those fees. Next year, the fee in this budget would be reduced to twenty-five dollars. And then in fiscal twenty-four, the fee would be nonexistent, which is the direction that we're hoping to move in in terms of fees for students. In terms of the projected budget distribution, so again, looking at the statutory assessment process that is required of a regional school district, I think it's important because the assessment impacts each of the communities differently. So if we look at the total budget of the recommended budget, and then subtracting certain revenue, and the projections or the assumptions that are made is that we've held, that we've held constant FY twenty-two numbers in terms of the reductions. So for example, Chapter Seventy-eight reflects what we received in fiscal year twenty-two. Regional Transportation Eight, again, revenues are all FY twenty-two numbers. They don't reflect FY twenty-three numbers because we don't have that data at this point in time. But for the exercise, we use those data to calculate what the impact would be in terms of assessments to each of the communities. So again, totaling those, Chapter Seventy, regional transportation revenues is a little under four million dollars. And the total FY twenty-three budget after offsets is twenty-one million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And again, then we look at the minimum local contribution, which is a number that is calculated by the state and provided to us. The MLC numbers that you see presented this evening are last year's MLC numbers. We will receive these numbers and these data again in the next few weeks. And when we subtract the MLC numbers, FY twenty-three budget after required contributions is eight million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. And that is the number that is appropriated by the regional agreement. So again, the regional agreement speaks to enrollment percentages by each of the communities. So Northborough's portion as of October one, twenty-one, is sixty-one point zero-eight percent. Southborough's portion is thirty-eight point ninety percent. So apportionment by the regional agreement. Northborough's percentage is five million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Southborough's is three million, two hundred and seventy-seven, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. And then the MLC numbers, and that is where we get the assessment. So Northborough's assessment is thirteen million, five hundred and forty-six, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. And Southborough's assessment is eight million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. And compared to FY twenty-two, that is a five-point-zero-seven percent increase from Northborough and a nine-point-six-seven percent increase on assessment over fiscal year twenty-two for Southborough, which is significant. So what levers do the school committee have to reduce the total assessment? It's actually just one lever, and that is excess and deficiency. So the Operational Budget Subcommittee didn't ask if I would, we would do a calculation of what would applying six hundred thousand of E and D do to the assessments to the two communities? So that is this table. So if we were to apply six hundred thousand dollars to E and D, it would reduce Northborough's assessment to two-point-two-two percent and Southborough's assessment to six-point-five-four, five-four percent. So it does have a significant impact. And in terms of our E and D balance and where we are with policy, we have a healthy E and D account at this point in time. And we still would be within the committee's E and D policy with applying six hundred thousand dollars. So it would be my recommendation to the committee, when it votes the recommended budget, to apply a portion of E and D to that budget. I will share that at this point in time, I do feel it's too early for the committee to vote a recommended budget. I think there are too many unknowns in terms of MLC, Chapter Seventy-eight, regional transportation, for us to really have a good picture of what our fiscal year twenty-three budget would look like for the region. And it does, we do have the gift of time. If we move the recommended budget vote to February, that still allows us time to have public hearings, more conversations, and really make sure we have a budget that is finely tuned and inaccurate with good data. So I did enough talking, and I will end and be happy to answer any questions.
Paul?
So if I could, just I think for, you know, for some clarity for everybody listening and watching, you go back to the slide of the budget drivers, Greg?
Sure.
It's, you know, we're going up seven hundred and fifty grand, I think, over, I'll lie from a budget point of view, but when you actually look at the things that drove this budget higher than it was last year, the, the amount of items that are discretionary are woefully small. I think the only thing that we really have any sort of control over would be the instructional textbooks, the materials and technology, and the discretionary OPEB contribution that we're putting in. Everything else, the salary increases and COLAs are collectively bargained. You know, the insurance is insurance, you know, whatever they charge us is what we're going to have to pay. You know, the special ed out-of-district is something that we just have to pay when it, when it occurs. And the same thing with the collaborative tuition. So out of this seven fifty, you know, unless we do some sort of like, you know, staffing reductions of some kind, you know, the discretion that the committee has focused on forty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. I mean, it's, you know, the rest is by level-setting it and trying to keep everything going. I mean, I think that it's kind of worth pointing out. And then the other thing I would point out, when you see the, the kind of the, since we kept everything else the same, MLCs, you know, all of the other things going forward, and when you see the, the kind of the delta in the charges to the two towns of the assessment, it is basically one hundred percent driven by the math of how many more kids from Southborough are a percentage of the hold this year than there were last year. I mean, it's a, it's a decent, you know, it's not a double-digit percent, but it's.
It's a two-point-five percent shift from Northborough to Southborough that we saw in this fiscal year. Just to give you.
Yeah, so two-point-five percent on a base of thirty-six, you know, was, you know, like an eight percent or seven or eight. But yeah, so two point five percent on a base of thirty-six, you know, was, you know, like an eight percent or seven or eight percent increase in their, in their assessment charge is what it rolled into. So it was a, you know, it was just a kind of a tricky budget and, and, you know, it's tricky every year. But I think that, I think that the discretionary component of this is something kind of well worth pointing out to folks.
So noting that, that's the perfect analysis. So is it, is it, is this the time for the proper use of some of that E and D?
I think so. I think that the only use that a district can apply E and D to is reducing assessments. We are in healthy shape in terms of our E and D balance. And I think I highly recommend the committee's use of E and D to impact the assessments and the taxpayers of both communities in a positive way.
Do you see this as a one-time impact? Is this going to happen next year, the year after, the year after?
Yeah, I mean, I think that until we create other stabilization funds, you know, capital stabilization fund, the only mechanism we have to put in any access, and that is just through good budgeting, is E and D. So I think, you know, and maintaining the E and D according to the school committee policy.
Right.
I think if we maintain according to the policy, we can apply some portion of E and D annually moving forward as long as we're, you know, we're continuing to track the way we've been over the past five, seven years.
I think Becky would have a better handle on it. But we've given E and D money back to lower the assessment for, my guess would be seven out of the last eight years, five out of the last six. I mean, some number like that. There was one year where we didn't, but I, I can only recall one. You know, so there's, you know, there'd be a little bit of a concern of giving too much in any one year because then we're just in a, you know, leakier boat next year when we don't have any of E and D to give, you know. So we're between the, the school committee policy of saying, you know, hold on to a few percent. You know, giving back the six hundred thousand seems like the right number. And we did ask Becky to run a couple of different scenarios to see, you know, should we give five hundred, should we give seven? Where do we stand in terms of policy and things like that? Six seemed like a strong number.
So FY twenty was the only year in the past, you know, I think, we've ten years that we've not used E and D to lower assessments.
And then, you know me, I love the slide of the two-year reduction in the activity fee. I think that's definitely outstanding. Wherever you got that idea, I think it's, I think. I'll go along with doing the same thing with the parking fee in particular. People need to park, it's asphalt, you have to maintain the asphalt regardless if there's one car on there. Like surely, I guess, if you put all the cars on there, you have to maintain it a little more often, but it's asphalt. So have you thought about that?
Yeah, so, so we've looked, we did look at athletic fees and parking fees. And I think in the operational budget subcommittee, we had conversations around what fee to start with. So again, we had a brilliant idea from one of the committee members that we moved forward with. The parking fee, there were some conversations around, that is still a choice. People still have a choice to take free transportation, busing, or drive to school. So there was a conversation around if, if there is a place to apply a fee, that seems reasonable. And then the other, the operational budget subcommittee was very interested in looking with, was athletics, was really thinking about trying to reduce the athletic fee.
Right.
Because again, that is, you know, that is not necessarily a choice, you know, in terms of we want kids to participate in it. We don't want the fee to be a barrier to participating in athletics.
I agree. And I would encourage you to continue to look at whether or not you can do a modest, you know, reasonable decline, a reduction year over year and just, and show parents that yes, we are doing this and we're reducing those fees as well. And then I get your point on parking, you know, to a certain extent. I mean, it's, you know, I don't, I don't suppose at the school, when they just get rid of the parking lot because everyone has free transportation with a bus, so we're getting rid of the parking lot.
We have solar plants.
It's all again, right, you put those there. So I somewhat get that point, but not completely, but well done, great presentation again.
So Dan, we're like starting small.
We are.
Well, like we, we hear you.
Well, it's great.
And we did actually work a whole athletic piece bit too, like we went through like a whole project part of it, but we just felt like starting here.
No.
It's like the best way to start.
Oh, that's excellent.
And plus the fact like, if you think about like buses too, like ours are free, like a lot of towns like you have to pay for trash, like you have, you mean, there's certain things you have to pay for in order to get your, you know, meaning for buses.
So the buses are free, it's, it's in our tax.
Yeah.
It's in our, it's in our budget, we pay for it.
We have to, we have to, because we're regional district.
Other than what they're already paying for.
We get subsidized through regional transportation reimbursement. But yes, it does still impact the tax budget.
We're required to provide, as a region, we're required to provide.
It's illegal to charge.
Correct. We have no choice.
I have a question. So part of your exercise in getting to the overall budget recommendation, you did have a slide where you mentioned the budget drivers. And one of them was the staff reduction of minimal sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven. So can you speak to what that is?
So that is through attrition and retirements. So, you know, again, we didn't identify that particular position because we're still having conversations.
But you also have retirements up there, so that's how I was confused.
So, so the employee retirements and LOAs, so that is reduction of position, not reduction of positions, but people leaving the top of the scale.
And then you're going to bring someone in at a lower, yep.
And then we are, you know, hiring someone at a lesser cost to us. So that's what that, that number represents. The position, that one position that is identified in the budget is through attrition, a retirement. And through Shaun's work, looking at class size and feeling like it's not going to impact overall class size and class size policies.
Yep, okay.
As you're walking, just the insurance, that's just our portion of, we've, we're collaborating with the two towns and the two other school districts, right?
Yeah, so what, so.
So that's just our portion of like the larger?
Correct. So the, the insurance number, the fifty thousand, represents health liability workers comp. Built into this budget, the increased insurance costs right now is projected at five percent. Until we again finalize negotiations with Arda and the town of Northborough and the town of Southborough, we won't know that number.
Okay, so that's, okay, got it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Greg. Becky, that's not you. And we have all business, I think we have a brief update on the athletic complex.
Yes, to Keith.
Yes, I'd love to provide the committee with an update on the athletic complex and the progress we're making with the schematic design. That's being worked on by Gail Associates. If you recall, we have worked with Gail Associates before, working on a master plan for the project, all the different iterations of it and where we finally landed. But now we're getting into the real heavy work of evaluating and assessing the site, what is possible along those lines. And then at the end, identifying how much the different items would cost. So the update I have for you is kind of twofold. One is to talk about where Gail Associates is in the process and they are on target for a March completion of the schematic design work and all the associated documentations. And as of yesterday, we just got notification that we'll have an electrical engineer on site next week to evaluate the infrastructure and look at those different aspects of the project. So different pieces of the project are being evaluated and we're working with Gail to get those associates, get those scheduled and, and people being able to come in and evaluate. So Mike Gorman, Director of Facilities, has been instrumental in getting that access to the building, into the field, and what we're plugging along. So we're hoping that by March, we will have this all completed and ready for presentation. So that's exciting.
Um, as you guys do this, as you guys get like the cost and stuff, are you getting the cost board too as they give it, as they give you the schematics?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just curious, when they do give you the pricing, is it, is it cheaper to do it all at once? Is it like, are they going to give you, I'm assuming they're going to give you a breakdown of everything?
Yes.
But then if you add up all the different breakdowns, I'm curious to know if it ends up, if you do it in pieces, is it more expensive than just doing a project?
Yeah, my, my impression is that they are going to be breaking out with the different parts, whether it's the stadium or the track or the JV field. And then, and then within that, I, I don't believe there's a tremendous amount of variation whether we do it all at once. I think it's more, the, the numbers that we're worried about more is the, the cost of the materials.
Right.
And, and the labor charges associated with it and the different pockets. And I think that's going to be a driver. You know, when we do look at as a whole, you know, what, what are we going to move forward with? And that's why they are bringing it apart into the different pieces.
I mean, you can't do the stadium unless you do the, you can't do the track unless you do the stadium. So I mean, there's certain things that you have to do together.
Yeah, but there's some things you could pull off as we get further along in the process.
So we did ask for them to phase.
Right.
The project, so there are three phases.
Okay.
The main stadium.
Yeah.
The, the practice field and tennis courts is kind of three components to the larger project.
I just didn't know for drainage purposes, like is it cheaper to go and do all that? You know what I mean, like if you're doing turf in a certain amount of areas, is it cheaper to just put the drainage in all at once versus?
What we, what we've learned from other districts and other superintendents and, you know, assistant superintendents is that it's, once you get just one phase in, it's very hard to go back and ask for phase two and three.
Right.
Right.
Usually the phase one is, is the phase. So.
It becomes a single phase really quick.
We can't call it the phase?
So, you know, and again, this is partly the process that we'll move forward with. Gail Associates will come and present to the, the committee the schematic design, the costs, the drawings, the details. And then I think at that point, the committee can have conversations around, is this a phase project or is this a phase one project?
Any further discussions about part of this being an indoor facility?
They are, they are looking into that. You know, they, they are looking into the different options that would be possible. I haven't heard from them specific about yay or nay on that. So I, I look forward to getting an update from them in the next couple of weeks.
Same here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Keith.
Yeah. And the other aspect that we wanted to mention is that we were, Greg and I were invited to the Booster Club meeting last week and shared with them very similar information that we've shared with all of you, kind of where we are, what's, what we're working on with the schematic design and what the future plans are. And they had very great questions, obviously a very high investment from that group of what the future will be and what role they can play and, and kind of getting that motivation behind the scenes. So a lot of it's preliminarily, there's no plan being put in place. We're not, you know, dedicating a brick campaign towards, you know, a new athletic complex. That's a separate type of fundraiser that they're working on. But, you know, kind of working it into the conversation and understanding where we are. I think some of the information was new to folks and they were like, oh, they were excited about where, where we were heading. The other thing connected with that is obviously mobilizing not just those that are at the high school now, but the younger citizens, you know, of both communities because it will impact them and their near future. So, you know, these are all very preliminary conversations that I think Greg and I wanted to get to the table to share with them. Very similar information that we've shared with you and let them be aware of, you know, where we're headed. So it is exciting, it did generate a nice conversation and a set of questions and we were able to answer all of them, which was.
I think like one of the most, like especially coming from Southborough, and I don't know, like having little kids that played sports, I always felt like, and I don't know if it was like we weren't allowed to use like these fields because we weren't, you know, like even though Algonquin, we paid money, you know, for Algonquin, our taxes, there was such a, I don't know, like you just wouldn't come over here and like play unless you were like Northborough or Southborough, like lacrosse or, you know what I mean? So, you know, hopefully like it's something that both communities, if we do this, really do get usage out of, you know, versus just Northborough.
I would agree, yeah. I think it's going to be a key part of the conversation.
It has, it has to be a, a buy-in, you know.
Yeah, it does.
I think youth, youth sports in both communities are always trying to find fields. I think there are conversations in both communities around building more fields. So I think, I think the versatility of, of turf.
Yeah.
Allows the fields to have a lot more use than, than our, some of our grass fields. And just two other comments, the, the one is just, as you folks know, the conceptual drawings and some of the funding came from Boosters to get this, this, kind of as a catalyst to get this conversation started. And then, so I think that's important to just acknowledge the work that Boosters have done so far, which is greatly appreciated. And then lastly, part of the conversations and Principal Bevan was, was at the table is really, how do we make this a, a multi-use facility? So thinking about, you know, if we have graduation out, out on the field, what does that look like if we have concerts? Community concerts, how can we create structures that allow for a broader use? Therefore, broader buy-in in terms of moving this type of project forward.
Anything else? Thank you, Keith.
Welcome.
Next is policy development and distribution. We have quite a few policies to be distributed. And next is audience sharing. Anybody have anything to share?
Just a suggestion, we're two and a half hours in. And maybe one of the reasons why we hardly ever get audience sharing is that parents don't know that, you know, well, if we put it first, we did this at the Board of Selectmen in, in Southborough, we changed it. It's not, wasn't always last, wasn't always first, I mean, but we tried different things just to, and it's important to hear from parents and get their perspective. So anyway, just a, just a thought that maybe putting it down and near the end and, and parents saying, geez, do I really want to spend what could be two, three hours away if I've got something that I want to say for three minutes? And I know it's going to, I can do it at six-thirty. So we may get some better participation that way, we may not. But it's something at least I wanted to share to consider as you set the agenda for following meetings.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen?
Well, as Paul knows, in Southborough, we have it at both. We have an audience sharing at the beginning of the meeting and we have it at the end of the, end of the meeting. And I do think it does make it more welcoming for parents that can either, you know, want to come to the, come to the beginning of the meeting and then leave or can't get there to the beginning but can catch the end. But I will also say that I don't think it improved our audience communication at all.
Right, it may not.
Northborough also implemented that practice as well, the end of last year.
Hmm, good.
Beginning and end?
Beginning and end.
So they both have it, beginning and end, so I mean.
Okay. Uh, next is personnel, distribution of personnel reports.
So no significant updates to share, other than, you know, we, we are, we notified of a number of retirements. And it's always important for us to celebrate and acknowledge the great work of our retirees. And I'm hoping that at the end of this year, we can do it in the normal style of having some type of celebratory event and acknowledging our retirees' hard work because last year and the year before was much different than what we typically do as a district, so. More information to follow as we move forward around acknowledging our retirees.
Sounds good. Communications, not at this time, bills and payrolls will be online. And items for next month, we have library presentation, career center internships, college partnerships, and for Southborough Music Association. Any other ideas for next month?
Budget updates, will we, will we have new, new data for the budget?
Yep.
Goes without saying, I think we'll have another mask review.
We decided that we'd put that on like every, every single one.
I guess it goes without saying, but if it's not said.
Maybe the last one.
It may be.
Might be the last one.
We should have our new mask policy.
Mascot update?
Yeah.
Mascot update?
Yeah. It'll be a post-election.
Certainly hope so.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
What did, what did they call that video?
Sizzle.
Sizzle. Try not to say that too often.
If we can have some sizzle, yeah.
I want to promise too much bedazzling.
All right, and with that, I will obtain a motion to adjourn.
Moved, so moved.
I would like to second that.
You're slower than.
Yeah, yeah, yes. All in favor?